Melissa, do you want to take the roll call?
Ms. Quinnow. Mr. Fields.
Here.
Ms. Curler.
Here.
Mr. Waters.
Here.
Mrs. Bishop.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we stand and do the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to go over kind of the council rules for electing the council president. The council uses Robert's Rules of Order for nominations. It will take nominations for council president from the floor and will continue to take nominations until such time as nominations are closed. A council member may nominate a candidate and make the motion to close nominations with only one candidate. The motion should be to close nominations and elect the council member as council president. That one will need a second. If the candidate receives a majority vote, the candidate is council president. If the motion fails to receive a second or a majority, the motion fails and the floor is open for additional candidates. The other option is that the council may nominate multiple candidates from the floor at the beginning. The chair will take nominations until there has been a call for further nominations three times. So when people stop making nominations, I'll go, are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? And then at that point, I'll ask for a motion to close nominations. Once the nominations are closed, we will take a roll call vote or a ballot vote, council's decision, and we will, until, if a council member gets a majority of the vote, they're automatically council president. If they don't, the lowest vote getter will be eliminated and will vote again until we get a majority vote for a council member to be council president. Once that's completed, the council president will take over the meeting and will run the election for vice president. Are there any questions? All right, I open the floor for nominations of council president.
I would like to nominate Greg Waters.
I'd like to nominate Steve Fields.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, I said that six times. Well, then I'll take a motion to close nominations.
A motion to close nominations.
I'll second.
Did you get that, Misty?
I've got Mrs. Bishop's motion and Mr. Field's second.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So you know how we're going to do this now, Misty?
I just want to be clear, I'm going to do a roll call for Mr. Waters as president, and then I also do a roll call for Mr. Fields.
No, at this point, you can do it like this. You ask the council member which candidate they're voting for.
Okay.
Okay, and then each council member will list who they're voting for, and there should be a majority with just two candidates.
Yeah, just one moment.
I wasn't that bad.
Okay, Mr. Fields.
Mr. Fields.
Ms. Curler.
Mr. Fields.
Mr. Waters.
Mr. Waters.
Mrs. Bishop. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bishop, I can't hear you.
Your mic is shut off on the computer, maybe? It shows that the mic is off on the computer.
I think I got it. Can you hear me now, Misty?
I can, thank you.
Okay, my vote was for Mr. Waters.
And Ms. Quinnow?
Mr. Waters.
Two votes for Mr. Waters and two votes for Mr. Fields. Steve, if you're, thank you.
Yeah, are you going to announce the winner?
Mr. Waters is the council president.
All right, thank you. After a couple of weeks, I guess things change quickly around here, but, all right, so now I'm going to entertain motions for the election of council vice president. It'll go much the same way as the last election, so nominations are now open for vice president.
I nominate Steve Fields.
Okay, I would like to nominate myself, Catherine Bishop.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? One last time, any other nominations for vice president? All right, can I have a motion to close the nominations?
I move that we close the nominations.
I'll second.
All right, so that was Mrs. Curler that moved for the nominations to be closed, and Mr. Field seconded that. Misty, can you call for a vote?
Okay, and I just want to be sure that I didn't miss anything. I've got Steve Fields and Catherine Bishop as nominations.
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Curler?
Steve Fields.
Mr. Waters?
Steve Fields.
Mrs. Bishop?
Mrs. Bishop.
Ms. Quinnow?
Steve Fields.
Mr. Fields?
Mr. Fields.
That is four votes for Steve Fields, one vote for Catherine Bishop. Steve Fields is the vice president.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
And you're already in the right spot, right? I think that's where the vice president sits, okay? All right, the next order of business is the correction and/or approval of the city minutes from the meeting of April 6, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the April 6 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Misty, can we have a vote?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Abstain.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed for zero with Mrs. Bishop abstaining.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to correspondence. And anyone want to start with that, or should I just appoint somebody? Steve, do you have any correspondence?
I had do-do correspondence.
Nothing.
Michelle?
Nope, nothing.
Catherine?
Yes, I've had two correspondents, one from a constituent about Brookstone and the apartments that are going to be built in Summer Ridge, and the second about construction generally on, is it West Lake Street there, where they're tearing up the road and putting in the new water pipes. So those were the two correspondents I had.
All right, and I did have a correspondence from a local businessman. I shouldn't have said businessman, but local business. They had concerns about the past year, about how the economy's impacted their business. Also, wanted to talk about permanent businesses versus temporary businesses, and expressed concern about temporary businesses maybe becoming more permanent, and wanted to know what the rules were surrounding that. And also, there was a correspondence about a mask that I was copied on in the city library, and I think that was more for the city library board than it was for the city council, but I thought that that should be mentioned as well. Anything else? All right, so now we're moving to the questions and public comment. And since we have no public hearing today, the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting, has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, is there anyone that would like to make comments from the gallery tonight? Go ahead.
Good? All right, we got it. All right, thank you. My name is Nikki Engler, and I live at 207 Crestview Lane, right inside Brookstone. I'm here to discuss two things. One of my neighbors asked me to bring up the fact that our siren in our neighborhood still does not consistently ring. So we would really plead with you to please get that taken care of. I know it has been brought up a lot in the last few years, but if it's an emergency, we should be able to hear the siren every time the city makes it sounded. My personal concern, and my husband's also, is that we have that development going up, Summer Ridge Apartments, right kitty corner from where we live. The 56 units that are going in there did come as a surprise to us, not that there wouldn't be building there, we understand that there would have been building there at some point, but that they are one, two, and three bedroom units. We are kind of guessing that that would be approximately 100 cars to be added to that entrance there at Crestview and Brookstone. That is already an extremely busy intersection. And also, there has already been concerns and experiences people have had with the going up the hill at Brookstone out towards Highway B in the wintertime, that people oftentimes lose traction due to slipperiness, vehicles going backwards, sliding there, and adding another 100 cars there is a very real concern for a lot of people. With that being said, I see that the developer conducted a market survey for his development regarding the demand for his apartments, but I cannot find anywhere that the city of Lake Mills conducted a traffic study on the intersection, or the two intersections frankly, at Highway B and Brookstone, or at Crestview and Brookstone. That is a very real concern, so as nice as the apartments may seem going in there, and as wonderful as it may seem to gain some tax revenue, it is a very real concern for the people who already do live in Brookstone and in the city of Lake Mills. We are very concerned as a community that there was absolutely no public input allowed. There was no communication given from the city council members who represent us in our, right there in the neighborhood. There was a very great sale made at that new house on the corner of Brookstone and Crestview right there. That house was just purchased, and in speaking with the seller and the purchaser, neither one of them was made aware that there was going to be a 56-unit development built right across the street from them at a very high price. So I wonder, if there was no disclosure to that very new sale of that house, and there was no communication given to the existing residents in that neighborhood to ask you the questions and to express our concerns, what is the use of the city council? And I say that with respect, I want you to know that, to the city council. I do not understand why Steve Wilkie and the developer seemed to have come to some sort of a conclusion and came to you at the meeting on April 6, and you did not have any questions for the developer at that time, and there was no questions for Steve Wilkie, it seemed, at that time, going back to the meeting. It is very troubling to us, and frankly, I expect better from the people who I support because you have given your lives, a great deal of your lives anyways, to serving our community, but please do actually serve us and not the developers coming in. There is a huge amount of growth happening in Lake Mills right now, and I'm, and not just me, but there are a lot of people who are extremely concerned of the rate at which we are growing and what is going to come next. All this growth may bring in property tax increase, but it also brings in a lot of cost to our community. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. It doesn't look like there's anyone else in the gallery here. Is there anyone online that would like to provide comment tonight? Anyone else online? All right, anyone else online? It doesn't look like it. So I think we close the comment section out here and move to the city manager's report.
I'll start with the general report. I start off with Everstream. They are the cable company that is putting in new cable throughout the whole city, so you'll see a lot of work on County Highway V, Mulberry, Water Street, and Main Street. They are putting in underground cable that actually runs all the way from Milwaukee to Madison. We are still working on composting, and we will probably be bringing forth a study session on that topic here this summer, along with multiple other ones. West Lake Street Project, West Lake Street Project has been in the stages for five years. We received a lot of kickback because we delayed it one year. Anytime you're digging underground, you find a lot of things you didn't anticipate, so, and downtown is always a difficult place to work, so it's been, but we've done the best we could with what we had available to us, so we hope that goes well. Reed Street is another project, that's one block over on the northeast side of the city. That's mainly sewer and water project, but it also does include new pavement. Jefferson Street is a project on the east side of the city. Basically, it's a some water and then pavement on sidewalk. The city did receive a TAP grant. I don't know how many of you are aware that the TAP grant is set up for '23. It involves the construction of multiple sidewalks around the city. So it will start actually this summer, and when I say that, we're going to start doing the design work. Whenever you get a state grant, it's generally about three years to get through the process, so construction will be starting in '23. South Main Street is not a done project yet, so Pinnacle Hall Route was one of the main issues that was still outstanding. I think we've come to an agreement on that, and we'll probably see that project finalized. The state handles that, so we have to go through their subcontracted onsite engineer, which was Chad, but he should be finalizing that out sometime this summer. Betsy will then make the final payment on that, that's about $211,000. Dwayne will be handling a large portion of Pinnacle Hall Route that was split up between the contractors for South Main Street, the city, and the school district.
Hey, Steve? Can you provide some background on what the hall route is all about? I'm not familiar with that.
During certain types of construction projects, there's a large amount of hauling that's going on with larger dump trucks loaded heavily, and they do a lot of damage to streets that weren't designed to handle that. The school districts project had a lot of rock hauled in to the soccer football track field there, and the contractor wanted to use that route as an alternate route because it was easier for him than running around, all the way around the south end of the city. So they agreed to a package where they would split the cost of fixing the street as well as the city. It was obviously about, what, a three or four? And so the city would have milled it anyways, so we put up a certain percentage of the cost ourselves, and then they split some of the other costs. But we designated it as a hall route. You'll note that it was milled and overlaid, and so the work is all been done. It's just now finalizing who gets paid when. Sandy Beach Boat Launch is probably 50% done. The project started early this year, it's supposed to be done by May 30. It looks like it's on schedule. The boat launch portion in the water is actually complete. They have actually pulled their sheet pilings and their barrier and are now mainly looking at curb and asphalt. Sandy Beach Restaurant, I have a lot of contact related to the Sandy Beach Restaurant from people interested in running that restaurant, so that'll be something that we'll need to continue to work on.
Steve, quick question on the boat, back to the boat launch. It was before my time on the council when that was approved. Is the existing launch remaining in service until the new launch is put into service and then being removed?
Yes. The existing launch will stay in place as long as there is construction. Once that launch is open, then the other one will be cut out. They might start cutting out the asphalt relatively shortly, but they actually won't remove it until the other boat launch is open.
Okay, I see a lot of Englers out there already and spring opener and stuff, so, okay.
We've gone over that in detail with the contractor and the engineer so that we could keep that open for them. That's why we wanted it completed by May 30, too. Memorial Day Parade is on, the Allegiant will be running that. Town and Country Days will be on, we're issuing that permit. The Mangan Development will be in with another request to dedicate public infrastructure. TOPOL is still at the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, being reviewed. Lake Mills Development, Summer Ridge. Okay, so this is the way those types of things work. If that zoned R3, that individual has a legal right to build what he gets, what that zoning allow, as long as he follows all the conditions of the zoning code. So when he originally brought it in, he had 70 units. We told him he'd have to go with a PDD and go through the process. He then pulled it back and did it, 56 units. He had all the open space, he had all the requirements that the code requires. In other words, he did what was within his legal right to do on a piece of property that's been zoned R3 since 2014 and designated as R3 since 1996. So staff followed the standard process, which is his legal right, following within a rule of law that he can build on that site, just like anybody can build their house, they don't go through a public hearing, don't have to go through any of the processes. The, we had multiple engineers and multiple planners review the site plan on multiple occasions, five to be exact. There was more discussion about making sure that we didn't have a secondary route onto County Highway V than there was about Brookstone Drive. At some point in time, it may require that an upgrade at the intersection of V and Brookstone, but the overall anticipation of safety from all the engineers, including the County Highway engineer who would have had to issue the permit for accessing County Highway B, would have been that this is the safest option.
Mr. Wilkie, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
You said at some point in time, there may be some revision to that intersection. What are the criteria at what point that that would be required or would cause that to happen?
There would be, excuse me, there would be a certain amount of warrants that would have to be obtained, and so what we would do is we would watch what kind of accidents or incidences occurred at that site, and then we would make a determination of what would be required. If you look at what happened with the State Highway 89-1, they did traffic studies, they came back with conclusions on South Main Street. Everybody thought we would need streetlights, they were absolutely no way. There was no way we were at that point where we would need traffic signals, and the amount of traffic on South Main Street substantially outpaces either one of those. The only difference is that the traffic at that intersection has higher speed. So the likelihood, now, I'm probably going to delve into some things that we really don't need to hear, but the state is totally anti-traffic light. First of all, because, and the city is too, is a set of traffic signals generally upfront cost about $220,000 to $275,000 for an initial investment. Generally costs about $20,000 a year to maintain and provide electric, too, so it's got a long-term cost profile. A roundabout is safer, and it has significantly lower maintenance costs, particularly in a location like that where you have two roads that match up, where one has a higher speed than the other one. And because there's a significant portion of what we call Lake Street, what they call County Highway B, to the east of Brookstone, that's still in the town of Astalin and not in the city, it's more than likely that they would opt for a roundabout than any other type of traffic condition. But when we do certain types of projects, if the county feels... when we do certain types of projects, if the county feels that they need to do something, they would have asked us to maybe put in turn lanes or some other type of traffic improvement, they did not. So we, we feel very comfortable with the process that we went through for making the determination on this process. Again, if you have a legal right to use your property, I mean zoning restricts your right to use your property. If you fall, if you follow all the conditions within that zoning code, you have that legal right to meet, to be able to build what's allowed. And I think that the city follows that carefully and we don't have any problem with that. A lot of times, let's say down on the south side, it's a zoning change or it's a PDD or it's some type of other special condition that's being requested, that goes to public hearing. In this case, none of that was required. So the staff went through it, they met all the requirements, bang, it's a done deal, just like any house would be. So from that standpoint, we feel very comfortable with what was done, even on a commercial or industrial development, same way. They meet all the conditions of the site, they're approved. They don't go through any public hearings, they don't go through anything other than the review to make sure that they meet all the required city codes. Now, once in a while, we do require traffic studies, but they are significantly larger projects than this would be. So like when we did the Newman Development on the north side, we did do a traffic study for that. But that was a huge project substantially, that had oh, probably at least six times the amount of multifamily. And as much single family as currently exists in Brookstone. And then they had probably 30 acre commercial and office. So it was a pretty substantial project as comparison to this one.
Steve, I'm gonna ask a question about the possibility of doing a traffic study before there is a bunch of accidents. Because when I heard you say something about there needs to be a certain amount of need, that brings great concern to me as a, as a person who lives in Brookstone and is aware of the amount of families that live in that area. Not to mention the fact that I have in turn been had to cross that road on my bike with my children. And it is a, it is a very dangerous spot just due to the way that the people coming from Astalin coming down. I recognize that this is not part of that. And maybe this is something for a future agenda, but perhaps it would be something that we can talk about later. I just wanted to put it out there that I feel it's important that we do a traffic study prior to any incidences because we would not want to be reactive, but proactive.
That's the problem with the traffic study. Traffic study weighs and balances all the issues that are occurring. If there aren't any occurring, it's going to come back and say you don't need to do anything. So if you decide you want to do something regardless of what the traffic is, then you have to, you just have to budget the money upfront and take care of that on. You can't burden someone else like with that, it's a city issue.
Yes.
In this case, because it's a multi-jurisdictional road, you also have to convince the county that it's in their best interest.
Okay, we can talk about that later.
Yeah.
Steve, can I ask one more follow-up on that? Just looking back at last meeting's agenda and the council approved the developers agreement. In this, this type of development, as you said, it was zoned R3, the, you know, property owner was within his legal right to develop it under R3 zoning. If there hadn't been a developers agreement, would that have even come to the council? Would we have had a role in that in any way, or that would just be working with the staff and meeting the ordinance requirements?
That's right, that's all it would have taken. In this case, the city asked them to dedicate that, build to our standards and then dedicate it to the city, of course. This council still has to accept all public infrastructure. So in that case, the water and the sewer and the stormwater were the issues that you were reviewing at that meeting through the developers agreement. None of the zoning, none of the other traffic issues or any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see here if I can get back on track. Yes, there is a lot of development, but you'll note that countywide, in fact statewide, it's been noted that there's a substantial lack of housing. And that's been some of the problem with the appreciation in housing. The need for housing is severe and substantial in Wisconsin to the point where they have made, where the Wisconsin Realtors Association has made a substantial plea to the state legislature and they have taken some very unusual and high-level action to encourage the development of housing. So and you read the report from the county, you have a good idea of what's going on there. So yes, we do have two new subdivisions. We probably have more houses going up than anywhere in Jefferson County, but we were still substantially short. So that's of what the projected need was. LSLs, lead service laterals. We have been in the process of replacing a substantial amount of lead service laterals and most of those are in the older portion of the city, in fact, all of them, right, Dwayne? Yeah. I'm sorry, but most of our infrastructure is still, I, I don't know if you read that one article in the League Bulletin about Blanchardville? And their 40-year-old water system that was failing them? Most of our system is 100 years old, most of it. And a lot of that means that it has lead services. Over the years, since I've been here, we've replaced more water main than we had in the history of the city prior to that time. When we do it, a replacement, we put in copper. So like when they're doing this new street out here, Lake and Reed and Jefferson, it'll be all copper water services that are going in, a lot of them are replacing old lead services. And particularly on Lake Street and Reed Street, which is what, some of the reason why we pushed to have those streets moved up is because we're we're encouraged to replace a certain amount of lead services every year until they're all gone. You weren't involved in the conversation, well, Steve was. There's also the homeowner's side, which is still lead. And the state has been, and through the federal government, the state has really been pressing us to replace the private side too. Public Service Commission doesn't allow us to do that on our nickel. So the options are, the federal government gives us a grant or we pass an ordinance that says every single household in the city has to replace their lead service lateral, whether they like it or not. Hasn't been at the top of our favorite list to have that conversation, so we have, we're in our second round of LSL grants for the private side. So we received additional funding where we get to replace up to 74 units per year for three years if the funding holds. I'm hoping it does because that will then take out all our lead service laterals.
Steve, I guess just question or comment on that? I mean, I think for folks that aren't aware, I mean, no lead is the goal, you know, for anyone in their drinking water, but are there, do you know, are there some hesitancies from property owners that, I mean, it's just sort of cost and tearing up the yard and things like that, that reasons that people haven't pursued it?
I won't guarantee that I know all the reasons why they haven't pursued it, but there's been a substantial number of people that have passed up the grant and the opportunities that we provide them to change out their LSLs. There's, you know, the lead service lateral isn't the only source of lead for them. Generally, the, the older houses have lead joints and lead fixtures and, and so that all combines into it. But as far as, I would say probably 60 to 70% of the people are participating in the program. But we still have people that are saying, you know, I've, I've survived this long, I'll survive another 15, 20 years.
Will we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Curler.
I just was going to ask a follow-up, will the city be out of compliance with DNR in some way? If we don't either, you know, ensure that all these property owners eliminate their lead service lines or we have some kind of an ordinance?
And not at this current time, all we have to do is replace our portion. But we have been put on notice that it will likely come that all lead services, private and public, will have to be replaced within a certain period of time.
Mr. Wilkie, how are the homeowners informed of the grant and the option to take part?
They receive a letter. So 45 days before we start any constructive project, we're required to send them notice so that they have the opportunity to make a decision on whether they want to participate or not. If they decide not to participate, we have to provide them with a a water filter, a pitcher filter, I should say. The we have sent out notices community-wide and probably will again. But this, in the current process that we're doing, we're trying to follow either the ones that we're currently replacing, so like Lake and Reed. Because every time we have to, every time we rebuild a street and then we have to go back in and replace a service lateral, that's a minimum of $5,000 and sometimes $8,000 for us, just our portion. So if we're doing it as part of a project, there's no additional cost over and above. So we try and follow projects or we try and follow projects that were completed prior to the lead service lateral being an issue. So from, I'm going to say probably 98 until 2017, is that be right, Dwayne? We put in a lot of water mains with copper services where there was still the potential to have lead services. And we will make a big push to get those people to replace theirs. We, in our five-year plan, capital plan, the vast majority of streets in that plan are the ones that have lead services. So should be by 28, we should have every street that has a lead service lateral on it gone. If we just followed the plan, if, you know, if we get all the grants and everybody decides to follow that grant process, we'll have to be in earlier than that even. I could tell you like Fremont and College and Oak and Reed, Mulberry had a ton, North Main probably has some. So it's, it's just a, if you look at the portions of the city infrastructure that were built prior to 1940, there's, which is those areas, it's, it's almost all lead.
Now, when you say almost all lead, is it the pipe itself is lead or just lead solder?
The pipe is lead. The service pipe is lead, inside the house is lead solder, but that, that actually went up until '72 that they used lead solder. And I think they still use bronze and fixtures, so, and that contains some lead, so it's, you're not going to get it all, but.
Do you also, you said it was five to eight grand on the city's part if they had to go back and do the laterals to the home? Do you have an estimated cost to the homeowner for the other part of that?
Yeah, so from the curb box to the home, there are two options. One is to open dig and one is to bore. Open dig generally runs somewhere between $38 and, and $4,500. And to trench generally runs about $4,500 to $5,000. But that really depends on where the water line enters the house. You know, a lot of those houses were on wells, which were in the backyard. And so you have to run all the way along the edge of the house and then come in the back. If you were fortunate enough to be able to come in through the front or you decide to come in through the front, that distance is substantially shorter and it makes it a much cheaper project to do. And the city funds that 75%. So through the grant, so the if you had $4,000, 75% of that would be a grant and then you would have to pay the other percent. Kind of an odd setup, but we're required to get a list of plumbing contractors. So they have to be city-approved, which means they have to be state-approved. And then
Those are grant requirements?
Yes, and then the homeowner actually has to contract directly with those approved plumbers to do the work. And there, and there are 75,000 other details if you want them all. Wastewater Treatment Plant Facilities Report, we are getting a, we're in the process of going through a new discharge permit. And our limits are going to drop, which means get lower. So if we were allowed to discharge eight MG or not MG parts per billion of phosphorus into the creek, it might go down to four. That's going to take new technology in the wastewater treatment plant to accomplish those types of goals. So there are a lot of things that we're evaluating and the cost of. So those will probably start to come out as part of the research this summer. So you'll probably see more of that coming up and we have asked them to allow us to evaluate a broader spectrum of opportunities. Rock Creek is a really small creek. And it has very low flows. And rivers that have bigger flows generally have less restrictive purting, mending requirements. So we asked about being able to discharge to the crawfish. There are some conditions that they really put on us that were tougher than I thought they'd be, but still better than going to Rock Creek. So those, but it, it's all cost. So instead of the 15 million, you might be looking at 30 million.
Is phosphorus the only contaminant that's being more restrictive?
No, there, there are more, nitrogen, a couple other ones. Total suspended solids, VODs.
So what timeframe are we working on?
Our permit is, our new permit will be due, I think, in two or three years, so. Oh, yeah, I think the initial presentation will be done to the Public Works Board sometime in, in July or August of this year.
Thank you.
Zoning, we have been working on the Bay Berry for a number of years. I don't know if you know, but we, we had the building cleared. We've been asking the owner to provide us with a set of plans. He has recently provided us with a set of plans, but there have been a couple other questions that have been coming forward. So we'll probably see something on the Bay Berry relatively shortly. Belts is a CSM in the town of Astalin. Four lots being subdivided right at the edge, northeast edge of the city with some houses, very poor, very poor lot design. I don't know if you guys where you evaluate flag lots and how they impact roadways and driveways, but it's a, it's a pretty substantial issue. We have had an industrial hemp process going on here and they're looking at expanding, so we're reviewing those options. And then Zoning Hub has been up and running for a while. And so if you're interested in getting any type of permit, go to the city's website and use Zoning Hub. It's easier than coming in and filling out a permit. Um, trying to...
Do you have Tyrena Brewery listed here?
Yeah, we're not very far in that yet. That has to do with their new site on Main Street, and I guess we'll see where that goes. It's kind of a very, very preliminary, uh, report. We, um, are working with WEDC to provide them with, uh, grant funding, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, issue of profitability in the public sector. Anybody have any questions on that? We don't have any loans that would create us any covenant problems. Probably our most significant covenant problem would be the loans that WPPI takes out because we do covenant with them, and so our, but, our, some of our debt counts against WPPI. But, uh, their, their position is so strong, it's never been an issue. Um, our position has been so strong, it's never been an issue. Um, so if you read our S and P reports or our audit, the reason this memo came out is there's, there's three memos that I put together that talk about how to read a, uh, government-wide financial report, because the audit will be out probably either the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June, and they will be doing a presentation, so this should help you understand some of the issues that are coming out in the audit. The city has an audit annually, every year annually. I know a lot of people say the city should be audited. I've got, you know, a hundred years audits, it's... Uh, then you saw the police department report, so that's the end of my report. Are there any questions?
On the covenants, it, most of our covenants are based on cash flow and having funds in reserve. Is that, is that how that normally works?
Well, no. The city, the city works on full faith and credit of the city. So a city can never not make their payments because they can always tax to the limit that they need to tax to make their payments. So there's no covenant or, or need to have cash reserves to worry about that, they just don't. Now, we do carry a pretty substantial cash reserve, uh, so that we don't have to use, um, intermediate financing options, you know, like, uh, tax, tax anticipated notes or bond anticipated notes or, or those types of things. It also cash flows us because our cash flow is very unusual. Uh, cities have, um, generally you get your first tax payment in February and your second one in July and your last one in August, so you've got all this cash coming in in a couple of months and then it, it just keeps dropping down until December and actually February before it starts coming back up again. So that fund balance helps curious through that. It also provides us with the ability to handle shock or other types of situations. So the, the fund balance and the financial position, if you read the S and P report, will give you a real clear idea of what they want to see in our, in our, uh, financial position as far as fund balance. So it's...
Is there any other questions for the city manager? All right, thank you, Mr. Wilkie. We'll move to the acceptance of the minutes from the Public Works Board. I guess these items are already accepted and will go on file, correct? All right, so if anyone has any questions on that, they can reach, search that out on the, on the city website. We'll move into city business. Item A, which is a discussion on the Lewis Station Winery. All right, let me see if there needs to be a motion here.
Would you like me to read the title, Mr. Waters?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Misty.
Would you like me to read the title of that motion?
Thank you.
City Council Motion Twenty-One dash four dash two dash one, amending premises description on Class B beer retail license, the Wine Vineyard, DBA, Lewis Station Winery, Two Seventeen North Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, is the motion to accept?
I move to accept, um, Twenty-One dash four dash two dash one. A second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Is there any background on, on this, Mr. Wilkie?
Uh, yeah, there's a lot of background. The, the history of, um, the alcohol industry in the United States, much less Wisconsin, and then the impacts of, of two, uh, Act Ten on those, and how the cities regulated them changed substantially in two thousand and ten. So now the state issues the licensed premises, not the city, for, um, businesses such as this. And, but because his is a vineyard and he's looking at beer, he has to get a beer license from us. So he wants his beer license to match his, uh, wine license. Uh, we are comfortable with that. I think Misty wrote a memo to, to that effect. Uh, we recommend that, uh, uh, process. Rob is here if you want to talk to him.
I move that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Lewis to speak with us.
A second.
You want to say anything, Rob?
Misty, can you call a, a roll call on the, the motion from Mrs. Curler?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye. You answered for me.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. The floor is open, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I'll give you more than that. Can you hear me? All right, so, um, so I appreciate the, I appreciate the council, um, reviewing my request, and, uh, as Steve illustrated, that, uh, alcohol licensing, not just in Wisconsin, but everywhere, is kind of complicated. Um, and with our wine license, it does extend to that north parking lot, and the intent, um, with requesting the beer license isn't so that we just start having parties in the parking lot. That's not the goal. Um, this year is a special year. We've been in operation here in Lake Mills for ten years, and we were looking at doing some sort of celebration downtown, um, as a, as just an event to, uh, to thank our customer base and to thank Lake Mills for allowing us to, uh, to be here for ten years and for us to continue to, um, be supported and, uh, to support the community. And to do that, we, we felt that the, uh, we know that everybody wants to get outside right now. Uh, we've all been locked in our homes for a year now, that, um, if we did a celebration, uh, there would be a good chance that, um, we would have some capacity issues inside the building, and knowing that people want to spend some time outside, that, uh, to just extend the beer license to the parking lot as well, and we'll, we'll rope it off, we'll have barrels, and it'll be very definitive on where alcohol can and cannot be. Um, that the idea is that specifically for that day, um, that we would, um, kind of have a celebration and we would kind of use the parking lot in, in that order, so... If anybody has any other questions?
Mr. Lewis, I have at least one question, if I may.
Sure.
If you can hear me there. So to make sure I understand exactly what we're doing, you have your wine license through the state, the beer license is issued through the city, and you currently already have your beer license through the city, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And this motion would be to amend that beer license so that you're, um, you're permitted through the north side, which is your parking lot, that you own and that's part of your property?
That is correct.
Okay, and that would bring it in line with the same, um, perimeter that you have for your wine license with the state, is that correct?
That is correct.
To find as your license premises. Okay, Mr. Joshua is correcting my language.
Yes.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry. I want to make sure I understand.
No, 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 you were exactly on point. He didn't want to have, but they corrected you.
Okay. I'll say he corrected me. Okay, so you already have the beer license, we're merely amending it so that, um, you can use that north side particularly for your, um, event, and then, um, I think I understand that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then I did see mention of a, um, let's see, I think a special permit for your ten-year anniversary. Is that something that you will be submitting at a later date?
Um...
No pressure, I just want to make sure that we're not considering it at this point.
It is, yeah. Actually, interestingly enough, on my drive here, I was wondering if I had submitted that yet or not. So if I haven't, it's, it's prepared and it'll be submitted.
Okay, and I may have seen a copy of it, but I understand that that is not for our vote today, so I just want to make sure that that's your understanding as well.
That is correct.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Lewis? All right, thank you for your, your time and comment tonight.
Thank you very much.
Any other, uh, questions or comments on, on this motion? Can I have a motion? I guess we already have the motion. Uh, we can, we can move to vote, is that correct? Okay, right, let's move to vote. Misty, can you help us with that?
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
I thought you said Quinell. Misty, were you calling me, Ms. Bishop?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, we'll move to item B, which is a discussion decision on bid awards for contract LM two dash twenty-one. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion Twenty-One dash four dash two dash two, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for the milling, pulverization, and asphalted concrete paving and patching, contract LM two dash twenty-one.
All right, is there a motion for acceptance?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
All right, is there any comment on this? Oh, he's, Wayne is already at the podium, so we'll, we'll clear the floor for him, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, so this contract is, uh, a follow-up of our street maintenance program. Um, this maintenance program was presented to the Public Works Board, uh, back in August of two thousand and twenty. Um, it was also then also presented, uh, earlier this spring with some revisions. Um, and again, street maintenance program is a planned strategy of cost-effective treatments, uh, to, to maintain the existing road, roadway system rather than total reconstruction, waiting till it completely deteriorates and then reconstructing. And so what this plan does is incorporates, uh, this bid incorporates a portion of that. Uh, some of the street maintenance would include crack filling, that the street department does, and if you've seen them lately, actually this spring, they're already out doing crack filling throughout the city. Uh, there is a chip seal program that we do, uh, with this. We work with the county that does, uh, the chip sealing portion, but before we do the chip seal, what we'll do is we'll do some of the patching that's required on some of the asphalt, some of the deteriorated pavement, uh, we'll patch before we do a chip seal. That, those patches are included in this contract that, that is, uh, before you today. The next level of maintenance is then a milling overlay, and that is also included in this contract. Uh, a milling overlay is basically grinding the top two inches of asphalt off the existing pavement, patching any areas that need patching, and then overlaying that area. Uh, for example, some of the work on East Lake Street last year, as well as, uh, Owen Street in last season was part of a milling overlay. We have one small piece of a pulverization project, it does tie to a developer on Tower Street. If that development moves forward, there is a pulverization item in this contract for Tower Street, that would be Tower Street north up the hill, uh, I'm sorry, east up the hill, and that is also in this bid. Um, another portion in this bid would be summer patching and fall patching. Uh, that would re, for, for summer patching, it would be all the water main breaks that have occurred since last fall. Um, other areas of other electric work that has happened, uh, we'll look to patch throughout the city. Other areas that are bigger than just a pothole, uh, we'll look to do the patching with that. In addition, some of the patching would also incorporated with some of the sidewalk program, which will be in the next item on your agenda tonight. So that kind of summarizes what this bid is for. It's not totally paid for by the street maintenance budget, which is three hundred thousand dollars. There are some utility costs, i.e. for the water main breaks, the water department or the water utility pays for those, uh, along with the sanitary sewer, if it's related to the sanitary sewer construction. Um, and these are outside of the construction projects that Steve mentioned earlier tonight. West Lake Street, Jefferson, and Fargo, those are not included in this contract. That's not this pavement, that's under the other, under contract that's already happening. So today's bid, or the bid that was taken on, uh, April eighth, there was four bidders. The lowest bidder was Paint and Dolan for two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the bid ranged from two hundred and eighteen thousand to two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, three of the four bids, uh, were below the staff's opinion of probable clause of two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it's consistent with past projects in the number of years. In fact, Paint and Dolan, um, has had this contract three of the last four years, um, as recently as last year. Um, Paint and Dolan is also subcontractor several city projects throughout this, throughout the, the season, uh, so they are going to be in the city on a number of other, other I can go further into, uh, our maintenance program. I know we've reviewed this with public work staff, but I, I realize that many of you are, are new to the program, and if there's any questions, I'll open it up at this time.
Wayne, I have a question. With the, uh, bid being in the last three years with, what, what did you say, Paint and Dolan?
Paint and Dolan Incorporated.
Has there been any, um, I guess, uh, review of the work that they have done to make sure that it's up to, up to par so that we're not just taking the low-cost bid, but in fact, taking a low-cost and high-quality bid? Um, because I certainly don't want to spend, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, just to know that it would need to be redone in five years from now. So is there, has there been any review of the quality?
Uh, obviously, staff, uh, myself and city staff are on-site regularly. Um, part of our, part of this program requires us to do a pavement race, a surface rating every two years for the state. Uh, so in addition to reviewing the project as it's happening, and, uh, obviously asking them to repair pieces that are not up to, up, up to the contract documents, um, we are reviewing on a, on an annual basis. So we are seeing if their, if their product is not holding up. So far, everything has, has been looking very good. Um, I, I would need to do some more research into the actual numbers, uh, but I do feel that since we've in earnest worked on this program, which is a seven-year cycle, I have seen that our Pacer ratings have gone up significantly overall, and, uh, although I don't have that exact number for you tonight, uh, I'm pretty confident that in the last six years, uh, the average number of our Pacer rating has gone up. Uh, again, our Pacer rating, ten being a brand-new street, one being a street that's falling apart.
You mentioned part of this contract is for chip sealing, and then you threw in with the county, so I'm wondering what the county's responsibility is, if any, for helping us, or if, can we bill them for any portion of that?
So, uh, let me clarify, the chip seal is done by the county.
Okay.
But what this contract would have is before we would ask the county to come in to do the chip seal portion, which is a layer of, uh, of emulsion and then, uh, chip stone on top. But any areas where, say, there's a, a large pothole or there's a, um, oh, maybe the ride isn't very smooth in a certain area, or the asphalt is deteriorating, caused by probably the underlying base, what we'll go in with this contract is replace that base and, and do a new asphalt patch in that particular area. Then once all those... base and and do a new asphalt patch in that particular area. Then, once all those repairs are done, including some concrete work, if there's curb places where there's not drainage, which could be causing the problem for the base problem, we'll fix those things first on those projected chip seal streets. And then we'll contact, like, once those projects are done under this contract, then we'll ask the county to come in. Typically, at least last year, we tried to do chip seal in July. So early on in June, May and June, we will be working to try and get those patches taken care of on the proposed chip seal streets. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. A secondary question is, you mentioned some pulverization, which will happen in the event that there's some development on Tower Street. When will we know if that development is going to happen? And so then we have to do the pulverization work.
There has been work on that site already. It has not been completed. And so we will not process the pulverization project until that developer is ready to install the curb and gutter that's that's required as part of their development agreement.
And so.
On the street work, there's a warranty period. So the contracts are guaranteed payments for a certain period of time. So we generally have a pretty good idea of whether that pavement's going to be asphalt or not. Patches aren't necessarily guaranteed with the rest of the market. Tower Street, that project has been online for three years.
Steve, can you turn your microphone on?
So that project has rolled over at least three years in a row now. And hopefully, this will be the year. But I don't think Dwayne or I are going to guarantee that.
Do you follow?
I do, yes. So to clarify that point, then, that maybe this year is the year for Tower Street. Let me think about how I want to ask this. If we're not doing this pulverization work on Tower Street this year, then what portion of the $218,000 do we not pay for this contract? So I guess what portion of the contract is the pulverization work for Tower Street that we could possibly save if this work isn't done this year?
There there will not, we're contracted to complete that pulverization. So what we just do is at the end of the year, we do a fund transfer. We move that money into the holding account again. And then it comes out again in the next year. And it just keeps doing that until that project gets done. So there's no, there's no savings or loss. It's just that money is held until that project is done.
Okay, and I think that answers my question better than how I could have asked it. So to sort of rephrase, we're not going to be paying this year for work that isn't done. The funds will be held until that is completed.
Yeah, all Dwayne's contracts are per unit.
Okay, I understand.
Yep, so we pay by foot or whatever, so.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Wilkie.
If I may, that portion is 9,200 on this current bid under that item. It is by a unit price by the square yard, as Steve has just mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this motion? All right, Misty, can you move for a roll call? Or do the roll call, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, that moves us to item C, this discussion decision on bid award contract LM three dash twenty one. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion twenty one dash four dash two dash three, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract LM three dash twenty one.
All right, is there a motion for acceptance?
I move we adopt motion twenty one dash four dash two dash three.
All second.
Did you get that, Misty?
Ms. Curler and Mr. Fields?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne, do you have any history on this background?
Dwayne, let's let's start in a little bit more history than than what you.
It's fair.
When we do these street maintenance projects, there there are three main phases to it. Concrete, asphalt, and oil and chip. And so because we do oil and chip with the county, we don't, we don't bid that out. But the other two are bid out. But each one of those kind of goes together. So a portion of it would be concrete, and a portion of it would be asphalt. And then there might be oil and chip on top of that, not necessarily guaranteed, but they all three kind of tied together. So whenever you're watching a street project, generally that concrete contractor is going to go through and put in a curb and gutter. And actually, the, yes, and then the asphalt guy may come in and tear out the asphalt, bad asphalt, and then patch it. And then if it's under the right street conditions, they will oil and chip. So you'll see that process over and over again. Now, that doesn't always happen. We get a water main break on October 25. We're going to patch that street. It's not going to get any oil and chip. But those are kind of the conditions that rolls through. So when when you see these bids coming forward, they're they're really not three separate items. They're really all part of one street maintenance project. So go ahead, Dwayne.
Thanks, Steve. So this is really tied to the last one indirectly. And maybe, as Steve said, maybe some background, if you're not familiar with our program. I had mentioned earlier that we're typically on about a seven year program is the goal. These maintenance remedies, we'll call them, range from a low of about $2 to do a chip seal, to a high end of a total reconstruction that, $2 a square yard, by the way, to a total reconstruction of $120 plus per square yard. So you can see, we can do a number of chip seals on a regular seven year cycle, as long as we can maintain and extend the life of the pavement, to keep us extending that point where we have to do a total reconstruction, similar to Lake Street, Jefferson Street. And so that's the goal of the maintenance program. A milling overlay is is running in a range of about $20 a square yard, and we're all said and done. Realize that some of the unit prices are probably a little less, but you have to then incorporate the portion of the curb that is being repaired, portion of the patching that's being repaired. So while the milling overlay on the last contract may cost about $10 a square yard, it typically probably double that by the time we do some of the patching and some of the concrete work. So a milling overlay is running about $20 a square yard, and our polarization costs are running about $40 a square yard on an overall basis. So you can see, and what our goal is, is to use those lower dollar maintenance costs to extend that life as long as possible before we have to do a total reconstruction. So does that help give a little background on where this program, how we're approaching this program? Some of the cycle that we're talking about would be a chip seal every seven years for two or three cycles. And at a certain point, we have to make a decision that the chip seal just isn't going to maintain it for the next seven years. Then we'll do a milling overlay. Same thing happens. We go through that. So once we do the milling overlay, we'll go back to the chip seal cycle every seven years. It will deteriorate faster. Eventually, we'll either have to make a decision on a polarization or a total reconstruct. Again, there are other factors that come into the total reconstruct decision. And at this point is typically a lot of utility underground features that are requiring some of the streets that are on the low end of our ratings to be replaced. We spoke, Steve spoke a little bit about let service lines earlier. That does impact our capital improvement plan pretty dramatically over the last couple of years.
The the total program is on 63 years. So you build a new street, you do your oil and chips every seven years, you do a milling overlay, you do your oil and chip, you come in and do a pulverization, you do your oil and chip. At the end of 63 years, you'll probably have to redo, do a new rebuild, similar to what we're doing on Lake Street. Used to be, we were on a 25 year schedule, except that we were about 35 years behind schedule. Because we just didn't have the money to keep up with the type of rebuilds. So this was a process that was developed in Michigan, and Dwayne and I researched it and put it together for the city of Lake Mills. And we've been on it now, and our our Pacer ratings have risen substantially, as he's noted. We've gotten from the low side of five to the high side of five. So probably from three and a half, now we're up into the seven eights. So it's it's made a substantial difference in the quality of the streets.
I have a question. Actually, first, let me just comment. I think this is the third time now, maybe, that I've heard you talk about this, Dwayne, either at Public Works or when we approved the maintenance plan. I think I'm finally, you know, understanding it. And it seems like a really efficient, you know, cost efficient process to evaluate and maintain that investment, kind of like Steve said in his memo. So I appreciate the work on this. I'm curious, with respect to this work, the concrete, concrete work specifically, does that include either replacing or cleaning out catch basins or adding catch basins where they maybe don't exist? Just think about in terms of like particulates and, you know, cleaning up the stormwater as it's going through the street. Is there any aspect of catch basins in this work?
Indirectly, yes. Staff will do that maintenance from the from the clean out of the catch basins to if there are, if you notice on some catch basins over time, you'll see some small sinkholes around the catch basins where some of the fines are getting into the inlet. City staff will go repair that on an annual basis. They have a list. They'll repair those. What this contract or the two contracts we're talking about tonight allow then the curb to be replaced around that inlet after the city staff has fixed the inlet, and then the asphalt to repair that patch around those locations. We'll do that throughout the city. But in particular, we will focus on the streets that are in the maintenance program of any given year.
Okay, thanks.
You should, you should probably make a comment, Dwayne. Most of our stormwater is inlets, not catch basins. So that means that it's designed to push the water and the particulates through, not catch, catch them. A catch basin catches it and inlet pushes it. We did add, I think, 59 new catch basins on South Main Street. West Lake Street will have catch basins. Historically, we did not have a method for cleaning catch basins. We do now. So it's it's gotten substantially better. But now you know why we had inlets rather than catch bases, and why we're kind of making a shift back.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other comments or questions?
I have no questions. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
All right, since we have a motion and a second, let's move to our roll call. Misty?
Ms. Curler?
Yes, I.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. The next three items on the agenda are resolutions that I believe are an annual resolutions that are done every year. So we'll start with item D, resolution twenty one twenty three. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution twenty one dash twenty three, designating official public depositories.
Do I have a motion of acceptance?
I make such a motion.
Second.
Are you good with that, Misty?
I have Mrs. Bishop and Mr. Fields.
Fantastic. In the future, why don't you just speak up if you need clarification? Otherwise, we'll just move on with the meeting.
I appreciate, I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's move to a roll call.
Mr. Waters?
Who is that for?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, let's move to item E, resolution twenty one twenty four. Can that please be read?
Resolution twenty one dash twenty four, designating official newspaper.
Is there a motion of acceptance?
I move adoption of resolution twenty one dash twenty four.
I second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, let's move to a roll call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Right, item M, or excuse me, item F, resolution twenty one twenty five. Can that be read, please?
Resolution twenty one dash twenty five, designating border review meeting location.
Is there a motion for acceptance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any comment, please? Hearing none, let's move to a roll call.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, the next three items on the agenda are all three ordinances that are going for their second reading.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Have that request from Lakeside Lutheran to theirs from the second to third, where they made that request. They are trying to sell that that those two lots.
Mr. Wilkie, can you turn your microphone, please?
The bank has actually got them on the docket for a sale tomorrow. So they would like to have the zoning completed. Once the zoning is completed, we can find that CSM and they can sell those lots. So if you're so inclined, we would, we would appreciate moving that forward.
Which item number is that, Mr. Wilkie?
Well, it's going to be this ordinance and then the one for Lakeside Lutheran. This one has to pass because the the future land use has to pass, and then the ordinance has to pass.
So that's G and H, I take it?
Yes.
All right. So can I have a a motion to, I guess, suspend the rules and to move both G and H to a third reading? Is that correct?
Mr. Waters? Would it be all right if I read the title first of G? If I can read the title first of G, and then if there, if you want to entertain a motion to do them separately, easier for the minutes, and that way I can still get my proper readings in?
I'm sorry, Misty, I didn't, did not hear that.
She wants to be authorized to read the title, because that would be the second reading. And then you can move to waive the third reading requirement and or move to the third reading requirement tonight.
Okay.
Request that she do the reading for the second one right now.
All right. So item G, ordinance 1223, Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1223, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map number six. And that's all that's needed for second reading.
All right.
Mr. Waters, before we do the motion for the third reading, when would it be appropriate for me to ask a question about moving to the third reading?
So may I do it now? So that would be now, because we're about to move into that.
And I believe it would be for Mr. Wilkie. Is the sale of this land, is the zoning change contingent before they can actually do the sale?
Yes, they cannot sell the land without having the appropriate zoning. And we went to authorize the CSM on a lot that that isn't appropriately zoned.
authorize the CSM on a lot that, that isn't appropriately zoned. So the certified survey map that we're currently reviewing would also depend on that zoning.
And the closing date is tomorrow. I thought I heard you say. Thank you.
So a follow-up question to that, is the city, our, our city staff able to turn that around tomorrow? That seems like very short notice from tonight's meeting. So you're saying that, that the CSM would be approved if the, once the council votes to approve this tonight?
We have been in the process of reviewing that CSM. I believe that we are close to having that finalized. The surveyor is planning on having it to us tomorrow and the final condition that we've requested. And then the, the board president will show up and sign it and have it notarized and then Misty and I sign it, the CSM. Once you approve the zoning tonight and Greg signs that ordinance, that's enough of a completion. I think it still has to be published, but that's adequate for what they'll be looking for to finalize.
But you.
We're confident you passed it. If, if there were any chance you weren't going to pass it, we would not be making, we would not be finalizing the CSM.
Okay. And just to repeat or make sure I'm understanding this. So you're saying that the city can't approve and sign the CSM until the council approves the future land use amendment and the rezon.
Staff does CSM. So what we do is we go through and we follow all the codes. So we make sure that all the appropriations are on it, that all the appropriate documentation's on it. Even the signature page is very specific by ordinance. So we have to have all that documentation on there. Once we're confident that it's on there, then Misty and I will sign off on it. But we would not do that if the zoning ordinance hadn't passed. It doesn't have to be published, but the zoning ordinance has to be passed.
So that you know which standards to apply to that CSM. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. To move forward with the request then, we will need a motion to suspend the rules and go to the third reading of ordinance 1223.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I had a question. That's what we would need to do in order to approve the future. Rather than, I guess, we're hearing. I'm just trying to make sure.
So my understanding, this is Dan. My understanding is that you are proceeding to the third reading and Misty will conduct that.
Dan, can you turn on your microphone, please?
I had it on on one, not the other. Yeah, my understanding is that you'd actually proceed to the third reading tonight pending this motion and then Misty will conduct the third reading.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
If I can just ask a question, Dan, I just want to clarify for the way that this is worded, this would just be to go to third reading and they'd still need to make a motion to actually vote on the ordinance after the third reading, correct?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion now to suspend the rules. Is there any other comment on that? Roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Would you like me to do the third reading now?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Ordinance 1223 Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number Six.
I move adoption of ordinance 1223.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call and the motion?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Field?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Well, moves this to item H. Can you please read ordinance 1224?
Second reading, ordinance 1224 Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44 Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, Part of Parcel Identification Number 24607131444000. Owner, Lakeside Lutheran High School, 231 Woodland Beach Road.
All right. So that's a second reading, reading. There's a request to move this, to suspend the rules and go to a third reading for ordinance 1224. Is there a motion to support that?
I move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Let's move to a roll call.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Field?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Would you like me to do the third reading now?
Yes, please.
Ordinance 1224 Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44 Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, Part of Parcel Identification Number 24607131444000. Owner, Lakeside Lutheran High School, 231 Woodland Beach Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion for acceptance of this ordinance?
I'll move to approve ordinance 1224.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's move to a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Field?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. Item I, ordinance 1225. Can you please read that?
Second reading, ordinance 1225 Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44 Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, Part of Parcel Identification Number 24607132313000. Owner, Lake Mills Feeding Green Inc., 1219 South Main Street.
All right. Thank you for the second reading. I guess that moves us to recommendations for future agenda items, item 12. Any comments there?
Yep. I would like to recommend that we discuss the option of talking with the county regarding the opening to the Brookstone subdivision in regard to the idea of having a roundabout as a safer option for that location and what necessarily needs to occur in order to make that happen. Or just in general, that they, we need to do some things to make it a safer location for families to be able to cross.
Mr. Waters, can we also, maybe this isn't us, but it's a Works Commission, but the siren in Brookstone? That was, I think, one of the first issues.
I, I should have discussed that a little bit. We don't set that siren off. That's set off by the county. And hopefully with the upgrades that they're going through this year, that will get better. A lot of that has to do with the process that they're going through on. And if you, we've historically had problems with getting good communication from them. That's why we've kept certain antique features in place, like our pagers and the siren on the, on the fire department in place. Hopefully that gets better this year. We're upgrading to all digital and they are going to a broader system of, of towers to set off the signals. So hopefully that'll come around this year. But yeah, that, it also has a tendency for some reason to blow the transformers. I'm not quite sure if that's the siren or the.
Just, just that particular siren or?
Just that particular siren.
Okay.
And a lot of it.
Go ahead.
Little bit of history on that too, is we went through this the last two summers and they've come out and done a lot of testing on it. When the weather's bad, it makes it harder because it's all based on radio. It was like Steve said with the pagers. That's why with the fire, everybody else, we're going through and upgrading all the pagers, upgrading all the portable radios, base stations, everything's got to change to try and alleviate that problem. The county's upgrading their entire communication system. But when there's bad weather, there's this very poor communication and that tends to, and that's when you need the siren the most is in poor weather.
I was gonna say like.
And that's when it's the least reliable. And it's, a lot of it is, you know, it's the equipment and the weather does affect it.
Does it have to do with the location of the siren?
Yes, just because of the way it's hidden in there. And it's, it's kind of like a cell tower with line of sight. If it's, if it's blocked or there's issues, it just does not work as well.
Well, whose idea was to put it in Brookstone where they couldn't be seen or, or communicated? I'm just wondering.
Yep. But that's just, yeah. Repeater is, we do a lot of a different equipment to try and make it better. But this whole radio program was supposed to happen last year already, but it just keeps getting pushed back. And this year it said it has to go forward no matter what.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
It is something in process. We've been working on it for a while.
Okay.
And the sirens are set at specific locations so that you get the best coverage. So we have five sirens and the goal of the sirens is to cover as much of the city as possible. So they're spread out throughout the course of the city to make sure that every portion of the city is covered to the best possible option.
Don't you find it a little odd that it happens to be the one area of the town that has a lot of families in it, that, that we would need to have that kind of thing fixed? But if Steve is telling me it's getting taken care of, then I will trust what Steve is telling me.
I'm not going to guarantee that. I'm going to go back and, and hit up the electrician for the fifth time. But I think that that's likely an option as any. I mean, I've been through this so many times, as she mentioned. We've, we've worked on that and we know the electrician very, very well. So it's, it's, I'm hoping that the new digital system kicks in and works. But as, as far as the location, actually the density of housing is greater, is greater on the north side of the city here than it is out there. But that, that's not the issue. The real issue is making sure that that tower gets hit.
I, I recommend that we put Catherine in charge of communicating with the electrician because it sounds to me like she would be a little bit more of a go-getter. No offense, Steve, but if you've had to do it for five times, I'm just saying, like, maybe we need to have a different voice calling. It can be mine, too. I'm cool with that.
It's, it's, it's not me, so.
Okay.
I don't handle, I don't handle those kinds of issues. But yeah, it's, it's a, they'll need to talk about.
Okay.
Oh, Greg, I just wanted to recommend resolutions to recognize service, similar to what we had last, last meeting. We certainly will have Mike Foster from the council and I'm aware there's several commission and board members stepping down. So just doesn't necessarily have to be next meeting, but sometime the next few meetings if we can recognize those folks.
I also assume that you are aware of the April 27th meeting. Okay. We're gonna, I would like to cap that at two hours.
Great. Thank you.
And since the agenda is at least four.
Pizza being offered or?
The, the second agenda is probably more likely to hit two hours, but the third one is probably going to go back to four. So, but I think we'll have at least five of these scheduled over a period of time. Now, Friday, I have my MRI and my pre-surgery. Monday, I have my physical. And then next Tuesday, Tuesday, May 4th, I will be in quarantine and my surgery will be Thursday, May 6th. And I will be out a minimum of two weeks. So we'll probably start slowing down a little bit there. But your, the May 4th meeting, I will attend virtually and Dan will be running the executive session. So first executive sessions in 15 months.
You're not mic'd.
Did we adjourn yet?
You haven't adjourned yet?
No, no. And, and Steve, I've already asked you this one-on-one, but just for everyone's awareness, who is acting city manager when you're out?
Elizabeth Milbrath is the acting city manager in my absence. Only happened one other time, when I went to Ethiopia.
We, we, we're gonna let you go ahead and recover, Steve. We, we've got it. I think.
Last time you did not, they did not. I was back to work within days. Feeling very well, by the way. The drugs were really good.
Okay.
Can I have one more item to add to the future agenda? I'd like to add a review of the temporary businesses in the city of Lake Mills and, and on that review, I guess we want to see if there's any recommendations from the, from this, from the city staff on where we stand there.
This is a, this goes back a long ways. I, I know what it's related to now, but we've taken complaints about the farmer's market competing with the grocery stores. So, I mean, it's a debate that becomes more problematic than you, you can understand. And what is a temporary business if they own the land? Is it no longer a temporary business? If they meet the requirements for being able to sell out of a food truck and they own the land, then it's no longer a temporary business theoretically. And so we can have this conversation. I'm more than happy to have it, but it's, it's a very, again, it's a very nuanced conversation.
Just for some history, we had the same conversation. Somebody brought up an issue about selling sweet corn on the, on the square because it does compete with the grocery stores. So if we start going down that road, we're going to have a lot of issues. We're going to adjust.
Is there any, anything else for today's meeting? All right. So we adjourned tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Greg, can I just propose that we go through the Roberts Rules process for adjourning? I think we haven't maybe been doing that in the past, but I just think it would be good practice to have a motion to adjourn and officially adjourn. I notice a lot of the boards and commissions seem to do that, so.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I move to adjourn. I second.
Let's just do, do an aye. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And that carries. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.